The meeting will now come to order. I'd like to ask everyone here, if you would please, to stand up and join us as we do as Vice Chairman Langley does the invocation and Commissioner Brennan will do our Pledge of Allegiance. A little bit of a housekeeping. If anyone here has a cellphone, please silence it at this time or turn it off. There you go. We appreciate that. I'd like to ask if any of the Commissioners have any kind of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda tonight. Hearing none, we move forward. We need approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. On a vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Seven zero. Time for items for presentation. At this time, Brian is going to introduce some folks that we have brought in in regards to Brenda Hamilton's investigation and review. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, there were multiple agencies that were involved in this investigation. We have representatives here tonight. First of all, Lieutenant Jim Van Landingham with the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, Criminal Investigations Division. Deputy Director Kyle Briggs was scheduled to be here. Unfortunately, he has a kidney stone. And Mr. Brad Howe, who is the Chief of Wildlife Management Division is here in his place. Field Supervisor Pete Benjamin with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And then finally, Ms. Maureen Hickman, who is an instructor at Biology and Forensic Science at Western Carolina University, who did the DNA analysis. So the way we had talked about doing this was actually to allow, to ask them to go in roughly chronological order. So Lieutenant Van Landingham will start off and kind of go through his. If you would, save your questions to the end, and they've got a presentation that will also...
Some of it you've already heard before, and here's a little bit of new information. But on the morning of Miss Hamilton's attack, the Chavez family was awakened by their dogs barking by the road where the attack occurred. They went to investigate. They found their dogs near Miss Hamilton, who was lying in a ditch submerged up to her shoulders in the water. Mr. Chavez pulled Miss Hamilton from the water while his wife summoned help from another neighbor, Susan Davis, who he called nine one one. EMS personnel arrived to find Miss Hamilton suffering from catastrophic injuries to both arms, both legs, and the scalp. Sadly, we all know that she was transported to the vining pit, which she died some days later. Beaufort County Sheriff's deputies and animal control officers responded to the scene. Wildlife officers and biologists also responded to aid in the investigation. Investigators were not able to locate any eyewitness to the attack, which likely occurred during darkness shortly after 5:00 a.m. that morning. I will add that it was likely between 5:15 and 5:30. Deputies located a dead nutria near where the attack began. Nutria appeared to be a fresh kill, and the injuries to it appeared to have been inflicted by another animal. A considerable amount of blood was also found on the road leading to investigators to look at the Hamiltons found in the ditch. Two dogs found near the Hamiltons, examined about an hour after the attack by deputies and animal control officers. Dogs displayed no signs of aggression towards deputies, wet, and had blood or other dog on their body. Later on that afternoon of the attack, excuse me, field tests for blood were performed on them. Both dogs tested positive for trace amounts of human blood on their paws and their mouth. On the same day of the attack, wildlife took several items of evidence to the forensics lab at Western Carolina University to be tested. The next day, sheriff's investigators were told by North Carolina Wildlife Biologist that domestic canine DNA was located on Miss Hamilton's outer jacket, one of her shoes, and based on those test results, North Carolina Wildlife would no longer be involved in the investigation. However, on the following Monday, sheriff's investigators spoke directly to the lab, learned the DNA found during initial testing was likely domestic canine DNA. The testing did not rule out wild canines indigenous to the area. Specifically, the professor told us that she did not have genetic markers for wild red wolves or coyotes. For that reason, the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office requested the lab perform further testing in search of definitive answers. Sunday, February 17th, two days after the attack, the two dogs found near Miss Hamilton, belonging to the Chavez family, were seized at the request of the Sheriff's Office by Animal Control, warranting for observation. Again, the dogs displayed no aggression, and were seized at the time during their warranting. The dogs were returned to the owners after the day of observation. The day of the attack and the following week, investigators collected 14 DNA samples from domestic canines in the area. Those samples and other items of evidence were submitted to the lab for the testing. During the investigation, investigators learned that Miss Hamilton walked the same route frequently as part of her daily exercise regimen. During her walk, it was common for her to be accompanied by domestic dogs in the area, including the two dogs found near her the morning of the attack. In fact, Miss Hamilton's husband told me he had actually asked her if the dogs had ever bothered her, and she stated to him that they had not. Some of the first test results returned to investigators found domestic canine DNA on both her outer jacket and her shoe. The DNA was a match with the two dogs belonging to the Chavez family. After completion of 85 separate tests, by my count, investigators learned that the lab also located canine mitochondrial DNA on other items of evidence, that being a swab from her ear, a swab from her scalp, the flashlight she carried in her hand, her hooded sweatshirt, her tee shirt, and also the dead nutria. Mitochondrial DNA likely came from one of the same two dogs. However, mitochondrial DNA, which comes from the mother, is non-discriminating, and a match to a specific dog could not be made. All other items tested yielded no DNA. While the reasons for that is unknown, speculating theory is that those tests were affected because Miss Hamilton was pretty much in the area at the time. In mid-May, the items taken to the lab by NC Wildlife for testing were returned to the sheriff's office. During a visual inspection and review of the testing already performed, we realized tests had not been conducted on Miss Hamilton. Bog and cap, lint roller collected from her clothing on the day of the attack, these items were returned to the lab for testing. Test results had been completed, and no DNA was found on either of those items. There are some hairs, however, left on the lint roller, still available for further testing or examination, possibly by hair experts. The day after the attack, wildlife officers collected stool samples from both of those. Those samples were submitted to the lab to be tested for human DNA. Trace amounts of human DNA, unknown fibers, hair, what is believed to be bone fragments were detected in those samples. Lab has completed their testing, the testing that we requested, but there is still a significant amount of feces left for further testing. Professor Hickman also brought us the hair, the fibers, and the bone fragments that she located in the feces.
Thank you. Commissioners, my name is Brad Howard. I'm the Chief of the Wildlife Management Division, National Wildlife Resource. Chief Deputy Briggs wanted to be here. I'm going to basically go through the timeline of our staff's involvement in the investigation from initial contact and the processes that we followed in our part of the investigation. Our wildlife enforcement officer was notified at 9:00 that morning of a potential wild animal attack. The officer arrived on scene at approximately 9:30 and met with the sheriff's deputy and three investigators that were already on the scene. The officer contacted our biological staff to indicate that there was a potential wild animal attack. Our biological staff started their preparation and response to the scene about 10:00. We put two biologists en route to the scene to implement what is really our Bear Attack Response Protocol, which is the response protocol that we use when we have situations involving black bears, attacks on humans. We have had a few, thankfully no fatal attacks by black bears on humans. We have had a few situations where bears and humans have come together and injuries have occurred. We have used the protocol. At approximately 10:00 after 10:00, our officer contacted the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service biologist in the area to inquire as to whether there were any known red wolves in the area. That biologist informed our wildlife officer that they had actually flown a transect route, I believe the day before, Wednesday of that weekend, and that there were no known red wolves that they knew about in that area. Our officer assisted the sheriff's office with visual assessment of the clothing that was there on the scene and began to search for any animal hair or other materials that they could test to determine what may have done this. One of my biologists arrived on the scene at 11:30. She was the first biologist to the scene, and she began to implement our Bear Attack Response Protocol. I do want to say that the actual purpose of the Bear Attack Response Protocol is to collect physical evidence at a scene like that so that we can identify the actual animal, the individual animal, that may have caused this. That's the reason we have contracted and worked with Dr. Hickman, because in a situation like that, you know, the intent of that protocol is to find that animal responsible for an attack such as that and kill it. So that's the implementation of that protocol is to collect that data, that evidence, so that we can identify the individual animal. For the bear attack, we would likely, and you'll see here, we started the process in areas where bears are, we may catch multiple bears in an area, but we want to identify the individual animal. So that's part of that protocol. My regional supervisor, supervising biologist, actually went directly to the hospital. He arrived at the hospital about 11:30 and coordinated with the Sheriff's Department investigators there at the hospital to obtain information about the individual's status and to inquire, to try to gather any available information that we could, of course, as we all know, there was no verbal information. We were able to have access to the photos of the injuries so that we could examine and see if we could learn anything from looking at that person themselves. We did that with permission, with her husband's permission. At about 11:40, the investigators on the scene unbagged the evidence that they had collected, and my biologist on the scene and one of our enforcement officers began to search those samples for hair samples, anything that we could try to help identify the animal that was responsible for the attack. My other two biologists arrived on the scene about 12:30. Keep in mind that I only have four biologists in the entire eastern part of the state, so some of these people are more than two hours away from the city when they receive their call. So the other two biologists got to the scene around 12:30 and continued to scour the area to look for any and all of that to see if we could find. They did find the nutria there, and they collected hair and oral swabs from the tests in the neighborhood, started the process of collecting that from the dogs in the area in the present. At about 14:40 that afternoon, one of my biologists started the process of transferring the evidence, the physical evidence that we had across the state to Dr. Hickman's lab, because again, the purpose of that is to help us start the process as quickly as possible in order to identify the animal. So that started about 1:40. We started taking that evidence across the state. We continue to work on the scene, continuing to investigate. Our staff was, my regional supervisor stopped to email the photos to review to our subject matter expert, our state bear and fur bear biologist, myself, the previous division chief in our surveys and research, so that we could examine the evidence, the photos. Because all he had was a cellphone, he could not see those photos pretty well. At about 16:00, the last investigator from the sheriff's office left the scene. My staff stayed on the scene to continue scouring the area and to set the bear traps, because at this time, we were still operating under the potential that this was a bear attack, that we had not found any evidence of bear hair, et cetera, on the scene, but we wanted to continue the protocol on the possibility that this was a black bear attack. So we started the process of setting those traps, or setting a trap for black bears. We learned that the sheriff's office did have the test strips in order to test for human, the presence of human blood, and the Chavez family had returned home, I think, in the middle of the day. We were directing the sheriff's office to test, as I think, to see if there was any test found trace amounts of evidence. We set the bear trap about 19:00. The investigator from sheriff's office left the scene at that point in time. We also set, as is the case in any situation, part of the protocol, we set multiple trail cameras around the scene of the attack, as well as at the trap, so that we could monitor the trap to see if there was any activity. The evidence was delivered to Dr. Hickman at about 21:58 that evening. We got the evidence from there to Halloway. That amount of time, Dr. Hickman had good possession of that evidence at that time. The next morning, we went back out to check the bear trap, to determine if there was any activity in the bear trap. We checked the photos, the trail cameras. We set the trail cameras down, because in some situations, the animals would return to the scene of the attack. There was nothing to be done there, and there was no activity on the trap. The Chavez dogs did come out of the house. My staff were able to collect fecal samples referenced earlier on these dogs, because that was available to be right there at the back of the scene. We actually set a second trail camera and set it to video mode, so we could try to get video evidence of anything that came through there next to the roadway facing the We never got any video evidence. About 17:51 that evening, our state black bear biologist received preliminary results from Dr. Hickman, suggesting that the raw data and preliminary results indicated one or more tainted. I want to make clear that our purpose in this, the evidence as it was transmitted to us that night, was that they, everything was in the range of what they would expect for the different alleles of the loco, or domestic dog, of all the DNA evidence that we had at that point in time. Once we learned that the evidence was, all the DNA evidence was in the range of the loco alleles for domestic dogs, and that there were no outlying or unknown alleles associated with the DNA evidence that we had at that point in time, in other words, there was no, the only evidence was within the range of domestic dog, we realized that there was a potential that the domestic dogs were then, were involved in this attack. So at that point in time, we made the decision that we needed to transfer all the evidence investigation back over to the sheriff's office. I had to remain in contact, and if more evidence were to rise, we'd look for other potential animals that might have caused this. But we knew that what DNA evidence we did have at that point in time said that there, you know, it appeared to be domestic dog DNA at the scene. We transferred that evidence back to the sheriff's office, and we went back to the scene. We went ahead and tripped the bear trap, because we knew, at that point in time, we'd already confirmed that there was no bear, there was no bear DNA that we did not expect to be a bear attack after the visual inspection. There's no bear hair, there's nothing, nothing of DNA of black bear. The DNA test confirmed that there was a black bear DNA. So we dropped the trap and removed that from the scene, and we waited to receive the final report from Western Carolina University. We did know at the time that she did not have reference sets for coyote and red wolf, but we felt comfortable knowing that there were no unusual or outlying alleles in what DNA evidence we had at that time, that we felt like if we could back over to the sheriff's office to continue the investigation, see if we could find out what animal it was.
Good afternoon or good evening. I am Pete Benjamin, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, supervise the Raleigh Field Office, covers central and eastern North Carolina, the work that Fish and Wildlife Service does for refugees. That includes management of the red wolf program in eastern North Carolina. I don't have any prepared remarks here, mostly to answer questions. It's the first time I've met Commissioners, which is under better circumstances than a terrible event that's happened, and I wish to extend my condolences to the Hamilton family. Couple of things I will say, I guess, as an initial matter, questions that have come up regarding what we know about the locations of our red wolves and proximity of red wolves to the scene. I want to explain, or try to clarify how we monitor the population and track these animals. We currently have 14 collared red wolves in the five county Alamo Peninsula area. Only one of those wolves resides in Beaufort County. It is over north of Bellhaven. Nearest animal to the scene at the time of the incident is actually in Washington County, Coastal Lakes National Wildlife Unit. We know that because the wolves do carry radio collars that we put on them when they're young adults, when they're large enough to carry the collars. The collars, though, do not give us exact locations on the animals. Instead, we fly the area once or twice a week, weather dependent, with an antenna attached to a fixed wing aircraft. A biologist sits in the seat next to the pilot with radio frequencies from those wolves and can detect the general area where the animal is to, you know, the precision of maybe a couple, few miles. We are looking for not exact movement patterns on these animals. We're out to determine if they are still alive. When an animal dies, when an animal stops moving for a long period of time, its collar gives off a different type of signal, and a biologist can tell that, we call that mortality mode, we can tell that we need to go in and try to find that in the ground. And so we're there to see that it's alive, and it's in the general location where we consider to be the animal's territory. We don't have exact locations on the animal, and we don't, since we only track once, maybe twice a week, we don't have detailed movement. Nonetheless, as was noted previously, we had conducted a telemetry flight just the day before, and the one animal was within her normal territory on Coastal Lakes National Wildlife Unit, which probably puts her no closer than about four miles to the scene. That animal's never been tracked to Beaufort County, and, you know, the scene is not in proximity to her territory. So the, I guess the other thing that's come up is there are other animals. There are animals that are not collared, most of them probably because they're still yearlings, maybe two-year-olds that we haven't captured yet, adults put collars on them. There are very few of those out there that we only know that because we go into wolf dens at any time and pull the puppies out and put pit tags on them, so we know how many puppies were born, pretty high mortality. I have a very rough guess of how many old age wolves might be out there. We're estimating about the total population of 25 wolves right now in the five county area, and most of those more in the eastern portion of the area, Carroll County. Then, and the other question, there are hybrid animals. Wolves are closely related, they're a separate species, but they are closely related to coyotes, as a close relative. They will interbreed. We don't know how many hybrids are in the area, but from our experience, it's relatively few. There are, through the history of the program, there's been one or two hybrid litters produced in the five county area per year, and most of those are removed, most of those animals are moved by my biologist. So there are no doubt hybrids out there. We don't have an exact count on them, but that number would be low, and those animals would probably be more likely to be found closer to where our existing wolf packs are. Those are the packs that are producing young animals that would be most likely to go out and breed with coyotes. And we'll say, final thing, so regarding hybrids, they, in all aspects, have a situation where two different species interbreed and produce a viable offspring. The resulting animal, the hybrid animal, is some intermediate form between two parents. Everything we've ever seen with red wolves and coyotes hybridizing, the hybrid animal in form and behavior is somewhere between a coyote and a red wolf. So that's how we'd expect that to behave. Last hundred years, there have been no wolf attack on people in the 48 permanent United States. Been a couple up in Alaska, a hundred years. That includes not just the red wolves, of course, which have never been attacked by a person or a red wolf, or a red wolf on a person, but also gray wolves. That's all I have for opening remarks. I think Hickman will come up and then have... I think the technical will come up and then...
What do you mean? So, my name is Laurie. I contracted to do work with the Department of the County Sheriff's Department and, um, the North Carolina Wildlife Research Commission through the Corporation for Entrepreneurship and Innovation, a limited liability corporation that runs out of work in Carolina. Legally obligated to say that, though, my, um, my professional position is as an instructor in the Biology Department and the Forensic Science Department at D.C. And so first of all, before I start, I want to express my condolences to the family and the community of Mrs. Hamilton, um, on my behalf, as well as the behalf of the WCU Forensic Science Program. She, it obviously sounds like she was a well-loved and well-respected member of your community and, and so though we didn't know Mrs. Hamilton, we worked with someone's personal effect, crime has an effect on her. In fact, we just, we, I wanted to offer that. So, um, so before I begin, um, my presentation here, just, uh, I wanted to give a little bit of background on just our program at WCU, the Forensic Science Program, just so you kind of know what our facilities are like and what we're working with here. So our primary goal or our purpose as in the Forensic Science Program is to train and educate our students to become proficient and ethical forensic scientists. And so, um, research is a big component of our, is a big component of our program and, um, the central kind of focal point of our research is isolating DNA from challenging situations and challenges. So this is like from a crime scene, from, um, from a mass disaster, from a house fire, we've isolated from the main soil, chips, so variety of things is what we do in our lab is developing techniques. And so we're very fortunate in our program that we're well-funded by the university. And so this allows us to have some of the, the most, um, up-to-date and the most, um, kind of cutting-edge technology in forensic DNA analysis and some, some things that probably stay at laboratories and I know that even, you know, some of the things that we don't have access to, we do have access to. And so, um, I also wanted to mention, we have, um, the way that we run our lab, uh, we have a working relationship with the FBI and, um, we model all of our processes after the FBI and so you can see here all of our... Apologize, I'm, I'm an instructor, so I'm used to using my pointer, but I'll have to kind of gesture. Um, all of our, all of our work is done in these laminar flow hoods and these are all decontaminated prior to all of our work with ethanol bleach and then UV radiation for fifteen minutes before and after we do everything. We always wear these personal protective equipment, you can see I have on in the photo, which is lab coat, the sleeves, the mask and two different cloths. So, um, we actually have a separate evidence intake lab. Once the, the evidence has been processed, it goes to the lab in a separate building, never to return. All these things are done to prevent contamination. So we run on a pretty high level in our lab. And so just to, before I start into the case, I'll be talking, we've, we've mentioned some of this and I apologize if you all are already familiar with this, but this is a refresher, but I'll be talking about two different types of DNA that we analyze. So nuclear DNA is kind of the traditional DNA profile you think about. So nuclear DNA is, is the DNA we're all, um, familiar with. So this is where you get, you get a copy from your mom, a copy from your dad and that makes you, you know, and it makes you genetically unique from other people. So genetically, um, the nuclear DNA results in genetically unique. That's how I can tell, you know, this person apart from this person apart. So if we contrast this with mitochondrial DNA, the mitochondria are just, um, they're little what we call organelles that exist in our cells and they're, um, little powerhouses there what give us the energy. And they actually have their own genome and all of our mitochondria have their own genome, which is actually a circular genome. And that genome is only inherited from their mother. And so what that, what that results in is that anybody that you're related to eternally, you should share the same mitochondrial DNA. And so this would be like your siblings, obviously your mother, your sister, your mother's brother, your grandmother. So what that results in, any of those matrilinearily-related individuals all share the same mitochondrial DNA. And so, you know, your mitochondrial DNA will likely be different from your father and, but, you know, as far as people who are related on your mother's side, it will be different. Okay. So you guys have already heard the timeline a little bit, um, so I won't go into too much detail, but initially I was contacted by the commission because I've run about, I think, five or six bear attack cases for the commission and for the Great Smoky Mountain National Park, um, previously. And so initially they thought this was a bear attack and so they called me and they delivered, um, kind of the first set of evidence to me on the night of February sixteenth. And so I'll kind of run through a few of the items that I first processed and you all know the results, but just, just that we have a framework. So I'm not sure if you can see here, these are just photos from Mrs. Hamilton's outer jacket. These are punctures in, um, the outer jacket. Normally if I'm doing a bear attack puncture, it's going to be light more. And so I used a black light to identify some, um, some bodily fluids. There was also a lot of blood, so it also identified that. But I excised the, the fabric around the punctures and I processed the, I extracted the DNA off of these. I did the same with Mrs. Hamilton's shoe, so you can see in this photo, there are some, um, punctures as well. So I, I extracted the, or I excised the fabric around the punctures in the shoe and moved forward with the... And then they also delivered to me this nutria and what I did with the nutria is I located the, um, the injuries on the nutria that looked to be bite marks and I swabbed around those bite marks for any saliva that might be present, um, on the nutria. And I went ahead and just extracted DNA from that as well. And so initially I ran, um, markers that were specific for bears and I didn't get any results from that. The commission also asked me if I had the ability to run canine markers and we actually did happen to have, um, canine markers available. So I, I ran, um, I processed the extracted DNA for canine-specific markers. It was eighteen markers specific for canines, like commercially available, um, kits. And I got two distinct profiles, one from the shoe and one from the outer jacket. And later when I ran references, it obviously matched the two dogs that were found with Mrs. Hamilton. And so, um, um, we talked about before the, um, not seeing any alleles outside of the canine database and that's accurate. So I, I would have expected to see the results outside of what we see for domestic dogs. We actually maintain a database for unrelated project at WCU with about two-hundred-and-fifty domestic dogs. And everything that I found and I isolated from those items, we had seen before in domestic dogs. So there was nothing new. And I would expect to see something new if it were a wild canine. And actually later I did run a reference coyote and I did see that in two markers. I saw two new, what we call alleles, um, outside of what had been identified before. That's how initially I came to say this is likely domestic, domestic dog profile. So, um, the, the, the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office contacted me and I got, they requested that I test a few more of the items I had received as well as some of the new, that two items. And, um, so this included some of Mrs. Hamilton's, um, inner clothing. Um, so these are her T-shirt and sweatshirt. Uh, these items were very wet and so he ran the light source to find, uh, bodily fluids which, you know, kind of useless if they were wet. So what I did was I just extracted or I excised the material around the shirt again and attempted to extract DNA from the material. I did the same for a set of gloves as well as, um, this gray winter hat. And then, um, I received her flashlight and if you look there at the bulb end, you can see some kind of, it looks like scratch marks potentially around the end. So I swabbed around that, um, pretty heavily and then lightly over the rest as I processed or I extracted DNA from these items as well. Um, the, the Sheriff's Office also sent along, um, some pairs recovered from the commission. So some pairs on lint rollers, um, as well as swabs from, from Mrs. Hamilton's scalp and t-shirt too. So in total for, for processing of canine nuclear DNA, I processed fifty-five total samples. And then I also processed, um, they mentioned some canine stool samples that had been collected the next day from the dogs that had been identified, um, from her outer jacket profile. And so I, uh, I processed twenty-three samples from these three fecal deposits, like twenty-three separate samples from these for searching for human, uh, DNA. Okay? So, so from these other items, I wasn't able to recover any, um, any canine nuclear DNA profile. So nothing like what I recovered from the outer jacket or from the shoe. Now I did get a distinct partial profile from the flashlight, um, but that's saying a partial profile is pretty much, that are, partial profile at, at three markers. I mean, it, it was consistent with one of the dogs that we seen, but it was also consistent with one or two dogs in our database. So it, it's not a very, it's not a very strong, strong match. Because we didn't see any canine, any nuclear DNA profiles, um, uh, we moved on to looking at mitochondrial DNA. And so just a little bit back to mitochondrial DNA, um, whereas nuclear DNA is actually pretty hard to recover, um, from, uh, crime scenes, from really a lot of situations, it quickly degrades. Mitochondrial DNA is, sticks around a lot longer. It's a lot times, um, much easier to recover because we have a lot of mitochondria in ourselves and like I mentioned, they all have their own genome. So there's a lot more mitochondrial DNA available. Some people said that it's circular, it doesn't degrade as fast. But anyways, this is good for us in forensic science because we can use it, um, when traditional DNA analysis fails. And this is what we did, um, for, uh, the items where we weren't able to recover any nuclear DNA. And so, um, I spoke with the, um, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, uh, Wildlife Forensics Lab in Oregon. Um, I spoke to their, one of their canine, um, DNA analysts and she sent me some markers that were specific for, for canid mitochondrial DNA. And so I took, um, I didn't process all fifty-five samples for, um, canine mitochondrial DNA, but I did take a selection and I was able to, um, to collect sequences off of several items. And so these items were from her sweatshirt, t-shirt, um, the, the wound on the nutria that I had swabbed, swab from the flashlight and swabs from the, and so I, I was able to get canid mitochondrial DNA off of this. I sequenced it and then I took the sequence and I, um, matched it against the national database where people upload, there's thousands of sequences. People upload all their sequences and, um, I came back with a hundred percent match to domestic dogs for all of these items. And so, um, the sequence was consistent with the two dogs at the scene and as I, they, they both had the same mitochondrial sequence, which I understand is expected because I, I guess it was a mother and a child, so you would expect it to be the same. But when I, um, it was also a match, it's also the same sequence as what we see for one of our positives. It's a very common canine sequence. So again, not very discriminating. And when I spoke with the, um, the canid analyst at the Wildlife Forensics Lab, she said that, um, that it's probably about ten to fifteen percent prevalent with that canine mitochondrial haplotype in the domestic population, roughly from what they can estimate. I did ma, I did run a coyote control for mitochondrial DNA and aligned it and then I also ran a reference. I didn't have a red wolf actual reference, but I had a red wolf reference sequence that I was able to access from the database. And I aligned them and indeed they are, they are, in terms of mitochondrial DNA sequence, they're very different. They have large sections, um, where some bases have, some DNA have been inserted, some have been deleted. I also ran my own personal dog to make sure I wasn't going to have any, um, DNA that was also matched. So for the, the fecal analysis, um, this should say twenty-three samples, I apologize for that, um, but I extracted DNA from twenty-three samples from three canine fecal deposits. I didn't recover any, any reliable canine DNA. I did get a couple of hits, but it was very low level and due to the ability and the propensity for mitochondrial DNA, I didn't have, I didn't have strong confidence in those were true or false. So in summary, I recovered two DNA profiles, two distinct DNA profiles from the outer jacket and shoes. Um, they matched with the two dogs that were found with the victim. I recovered mitochondrial DNA from Mrs. Hamilton's sweatshirt, t-shirt, nutria, ear flashlight. And these were all matched, all had the same sequence that were consistent with the two dogs, but were also common sequence, so not very discriminating, but domestic dog sequence. I found no evidence, um, or from DNA, DNA compared to bears. All the markers I used should have picked up coyotes and red wolves, especially the mitochondrial DNA markers and I never found any of that. And then the analysis of fecal samples.
Commissioner Ward, if you've got a question?
Uh, thank you Chairman Evans. First of all, I'd like to thank our first responders for their actions on the morning of the animal attack and also thank our sheriff's investigators who have tried extremely hard to solve the many questions concerning what took place on that early February the fifteenth morning. Uh, for your information, Brenda's home is located four miles from where I live. I'm also three miles from the wildlife refuge. And for information purposes, the Pecoson Lakes National Wildlife Refuge is a total of one-hundred-and-five thousand acres and it covers five counties. I'd like to thank each one of the speakers who have attended tonight. And therefore, the first question, uh, when you talk about the markers, it sounds like that you had markers for the red wolf and for the coyote. Is, would there be much difference if, if in that cross between the red wolf and the coyote, would you, would you see much difference in that marker if you had what available? Do you think?
I would still, I would expect to see some results outside of what we would see for dogs. As far as, um, frequencies between the coyotes and red wolves, I'm not sure. But I, I do think there is a difference.
The next question I have is related to the ability to locate the red wolf or any of the animals that have the collar. And, uh, I, I think I understood you to say that... And I think I understood you to say that that collar does not have the capability of saying at 5:41 where the red wolf was, that you're doing, you're doing a flyover and you're determining where the animal is maybe once or twice a week?
That's correct.
So there's, I think I've heard the comment that there was one on Beach Ridge Road, maybe within two miles, three miles of where the attack was at.
Not to my knowledge during that time period. Like I said, I think the closest animal we were aware of, collared animal, like the day before, the animal was close enough, four miles.
And the follow-up question would be to either you or Mr. Benjamin. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Howard. Within seven days, 14 days, was any animal removed from the area? Well, I say area, I'm talking about within five or 10 miles of where the attack was at.
I'm aware of, I think that it's very relative. I have studied studies where that animal was. There were different studies going on. I do know, but I don't know how close to that animal it was.
Thank you.
We weren't doing any trapping in that area. Commissioner Lang?
My question's a little different. You said in your statement, you mentioned wolf packs. So what I wanted to know is, packs that exist, exactly where are they?
We have what we consider a wolf pack, be anything that's a breeding pair or one more. They tend to exist in family groups, so a pack would be the breeding pair, that year's puppies, obviously, and usually some young adult animals from the last couple of years that's been around to help out with raising the puppies until they strike out on their own, try to form a territory. We actually currently, by that definition, by the definition I just gave you, we have zero wolf packs. We don't have any remaining intact breeding pairs at this time now, because we've had a couple breeding adults die this summer. At the time of the incident, we had one functioning wolf pack in Carroll County, several miles south of Columbia. The prior winter, we had an intact pack in that area we call Beach Ridge, which is north of Bell Hill. And we had a pack on, well, a millet pack on Alligator River National Wildlife Refuge in the area of the farm fields, if you're familiar with the refuge at all, immediately south of Columbia. That is the den of the wolf pack. Commissioner Brin?
I'd just like to reiterate what Chairman Waters said. I appreciate you three people coming in and giving such a well-prepared and detailed report. Settles a lot of things. I got one quick question. Is, do you know of, or do you have any information about a red wolf attacking either humans or livestock?
There's never been an attack of, one, a human by red wolf. I think, I'll have to give you the exact number, but the number's in my head. In the history of the Red Wolf reintroduction program here in Carolina, there's been seven confirmed incidents of red wolves taking livestock, chickens, goats, dogs. And that leads me to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So do you know where all of the red wolves are at any given time?
No, sir.
Okay. So, okay. So they could be just about anywhere at any day?
Well, just to note, because they do, they are territorial animals. They establish and defend a territory. Territory can be very large, 20,000 to 50,000 acres. But once an animal establishes that territory, that's where it's going to be. And, you know, you can't tell you where exactly, but it's going to be somewhere in that area. So if we have an area where there are no, we've not trapped any wolves, we've not seen any wolves on trail cameras deployed, you know, it is not a wolf territory, the likelihood is that there is no wolf there. It can move several miles in a day, but that'll be kind of zigzagging about their territory, not straight line type.
But the bottom line is, you can't really say where they are at any given time other than this area.
Right. The only exception would be, as I mentioned earlier, springtime, when our flights indicate that a breeding female or suspected breeding female has been noted in the same very general location, a couple flights in a row, that's an indication to my team that she might have a den. And then we'll track in on the ground and specific intent of finding that den. And then we know exactly where that, not just that breeding female is, but the pack as well, will be localized right now. The rest of the year, no, our tracking is much more.
Did I understand you to say that you believe the total population of red wolves in eastern North Carolina is 25?
Correct.
What about, and I understand, did I understand you to say that the mix between the coyote and the red wolf is probably less than 10 individuals?
The number on it, it's almost certainly smaller than the red wolf population. And management over the years targeted it aggressively, moving hybrids in the area of the county.
What is your opinion of the coyote population in this same area that red wolves have had?
I guess we don't really know. That might be a good question for the commission. We don't have a population estimate on coyotes. When the, when the red wolf population was at its peak, which was in about 2005, 2007 time period, and my team was doing a lot of trapping and really aggressively managing interactions between red wolves and coyotes, they generally were catching three coyotes or wolves. I don't know if that translates into there being three times as many coyotes at that time as there were red wolves, but maybe roughly.
Are coyotes, do they have the same general territorial instinct that wolves have, or are they more free-ranging?
Well, I believe they're generally territorial animals. They are much more comfortable in human-dominated environments. You get the stories about coyotes, you know, popping up in big cities. And I've got a very suburban area outside Raleigh, and I have coyotes in my neighborhood. They're much more comfortable in a much more diverse array of habitats than the wolf. Wolves generally not like areas that are heavily populated by people. They're going to stay more in a very rural area. That way, they're a bit different from coyotes.
It's more typical of an attack by a wolf or a coyote to take a part of the body of the person attacked than it is for a domesticated dog. Is that a true statement?
I don't know if we can say that, because there have been no, no, there have been no wolf attacks in the last 100 years in 48, well, 48.
Yeah. But I didn't limit my question to humans.
Oh.
Any attack by a red wolf or a coyote, it is more typical of them to use the body of what is attacked than it is for a domesticated dog.
Well, if you're talking, yeah, in all forms, and, yeah, the wolf attacks and food. With the exception, that's not, no, I'll take that back because they are territorial. They will not tolerate other canids in their territory. So they will attack and kill each other. Red wolves, different parts of red wolf mentality, and coyotes.
But none of that's true about domesticated animals. They don't, they're not territorial, generally speaking.
I'm really not the person that's.
Okay, this is a question for the doctor. If the, within the DNA, is it possible for a more deep sorting of the DNA that you have found to be more definitive? I believe you've made a pretty firm statement that this could only be a domesticated dog.
That's all that I found.
You didn't, if we went into that DNA more, would it be possible to sort it more in-depth to get, or to discover a coyote or a red wolf DNA?
Unlikely.
Unlikely, but not impossible.
Only, the only exception I can see is that we're not.
Right. And we have not very much information about hybrids, I believe, from what these gentlemen have told us, other than their opinion that there may only be 10 or so of them. But there could still be crosses because when you say a dog or a canid, I'm not a biologist. If I pronounced it correctly, that includes, from what I know, everything from a chihuahua to a gray wolf. So that's a pretty wide range to be working in within that one genome, I use genome bracket.
Yes.
Okay. So what I alluded to is possible.
Right. But the sequence that I detected, I found from the evidence, when I matched it against the database, hundreds, thousands of matches, there's no problem.
I understand. And it's possible, is it possible that in this DNA analysis with the wetness and the finding of evidence, that if it were a coyote, a red wolf, or a cross, that that DNA could have been lost entirely in this process? So we don't necessarily have all of the evidence. Was there anything in the handling of the DNA samples that would lead you to believe that they were compromised in any way?
You mean the sample type?
Yep, no. Within the handling and the protocols for the sample, was, is there anything that would lead you to believe that the quality of the sample could have been compromised in any way?
I don't, not really. I think that how, how they were bound, how they were.
To your knowledge, not?
To my knowledge, yeah, but I saw no evidence.
Okay. Any other questions? If I could follow up, on the, on the, on the cross, hybrid is the word I think people are using. Would it be beneficial for us to get a DNA sample from a hybrid to have as a marker?
So the issue with, with the hybrid, I mean, using that as a reference in terms of the least mitochondrial comparison is that you only will see the mitochondrial DNA coming from the dog. Right. So like, I only detected domestic dogs, so I'm talking about a hybrid.
One final question. Would it be beneficial to do some additional testing on the hair, fiber, or any kind of bone fragments?
So I think, I don't know that DNA analysis is necessary on the hair, but perhaps maybe a hair expert, a forensic, a forensic expert, that's an expert in hair and fiber analysis potentially could provide some more.
Thank you very much.
I'd add one thing. The hybrid issue, the, you know, as I said earlier, when two species hybridize, the combination is, you know, of those two. So you'll have markers from the, if it's a red wolf and a coyote, you'll have nuclear DNA markers from coyote, nuclear DNA markers from red. And mitochondrial DNA is different. But the only way you'd get any, get any dog, any domestic dog, is if, you know, one of the parents was a dog. And in the history of the program, we've never had a confirmed event of a red wolf mating with a domestic dog. Never found any evidence of that in our DNA analysis of the red wolf population. Like I said, they're closely related species to coyotes, they will interbreed with coyotes. They could breed with dogs, any canid can breed with any other canid, these five offspring, but there's never been any evidence.
In the case of the bone fragments, if I understand it from the investigation, or at least no one has said so, the bones of the victim were not broken? Then the bone fragments are certainly worth following up, that being the case. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. You were saying that the fecal studies that you, that you taken, there was very, very little of human evidence in that study. But then on the other hand, you said that those, that you was 100% that it was dogs. Is that correct? Well, what, what was the process? You took the fecals from the, from the dog, and you couldn't find, I hate this.
I can explain what I, what I did.
Yes.
So I, I just, I took the, I took the stool samples that were frozen, and I took tiny, like 90 milligram tiny portions off, and extracted DNA. So this would be all DNA out of the stool. So it was propyl DNA, any DNA that came in there. And then I used markers targeted for human mitochondrial DNA, if I detected.
So from my understanding, you're correct, you did not find any human DNA in the stool?
I, not reliably. I would not, I picked up a few, but like, one, just talking anecdotally, one of the samples apparently was picked up right around where a lot of her belongings were. So it's very possible some of it got over there.
Okay. So what, so you're basing your evidence on the material things that you had, like the clothing, the shoes, and stuff like that? What happened? That's it.
I have a question. You guys retained hair samples. My thought process is we have some hair, hair analysis at work. We don't want to compare the hair that we found to the hair of a coyote or a red wolf.
We don't have like a library of it, but we do have pills. We don't have like a library of it, but we do have pills.
Could you provide us with? That's it. Thanks so much for you guys coming out and ladies, a lot of good information, and we'll keep on digging, but thank you so much. Kristy Edwards, is she here for Trillium?
Good evening, my name is Kristy Edwards, I'm a Trillium Health Resources Vice President of Community Cooperation. Chairman, Kristy, thank you for your time. How are you? Vertically challenged. The whole thing? Ah. Again, thank you for having me here tonight, tough to follow that, that conversation, but I do appreciate it. Trillium Health Resources is your local management entity and managed care organization for 26 counties in eastern North Carolina, including Beaufort County. We serve individuals who have Medicaid or who are under or uninsured to meet their needs for mental health, substance use, or developmental disabilities. And so, in preparation for hurricane season, we came to speak a little bit about a response to Hurricane Florence and the ongoing efforts in your community now as we shift towards hurricane preparation with hurricane season upon us. So prior to the storm, Trillium Health Resource activates our crisis, um, plan. And that includes contacting about 4,500 members that we serve to, um, ensure that their well-being is taken care of. Do they have an evacuation plan? Do they have the medication that they need? For example, if they might be dependent on medication-assisted therapies to, to address opiate dependence, um, do they have those medications? If they're in a group home or they're medically fragile, do they have what they need to be able to, to shelter in place or to evacuate from the storm? So, we do that, we touch base with all of our providers to be sure that they're going to be able to maintain operations, that medications are refilled early if that's the need. Um, and so, that takes about 300 staff, uh, from Trillium Health Resources to do that outreach in the week prior to the storm. During the storm, we operate an access to care line, actually, we operate an access to care line 24/7, 365 days a year. But that access to care line is staff with licensed clinicians. And oftentimes in a storm situation where first responders aren't able to get out into the community, it may be the clinician who's on the phone and a person who's in need, who's experiencing symptoms related to the storm, maybe anxiety, or even perhaps suicidal or homicidal ideation or substance use withdrawals. And so it's that clinician's job to work to de-escalate the situation and get the person the help that they need. During the period of the storm, we remained in emergency operations for 10 days and we filled in 913 calls. Given the fact that we usually have about 900 calls, or less than 900 calls in a month, that was a significant number of calls. And so, not only were we getting calls from members in the community, we were also getting calls from the state emergency operations saying there's a problem in shelter and how do we get help? Um, DSSs who are operating in the shelters, Red Cross, um, when they came in, and county emergency operations. And so, this is just to show you a little bit of our staffing ratio, but, but we were luckily able to maintain operations throughout the entire storm and so we were able to stay connected with the community when they were in need. After the storm passes, we move into our recovery response. And Florence was a, a storm like, um, one we haven't experienced in quite some time in, in this area. And so, we had several staff of our own who were impacted, around 10 of our own staff lost their home during the storm. Um, and so we set up an internal resource list to help staff to assist members, um, after checking on our own staff. We worked with disaster, or we set up disaster assistance to help people with clothes, food, medication, equipment, and supplies. With the storm, we found most, many people evacuated inland further than typical. Um, and because the storm hovered for such a significant period of time, they had to stay and so financially it was challenging for them to be able to get back home. And so, we also, following the storm, contacted all of our providers and all of the members to determine what, um, what was available, what was their capacity to serve the members that we support. We delivered over 4,000 care packages to shelters and to members directly. We provided 1,500 comfort kits for children. Children in particular are, are really sensitive to, um, to a storm-type situation and can experience trauma from that. So specifically if they have to go into a shelter and out of their home and they have fear about what will be left when they get back. Um, we were able to assist with hotel and transportation costs to get people back home who were evacuated. Group homes where there was significant damage and they had to, um, stay in a hotel for several weeks, we were able to assist with that. Um, we went into the food distribution centers and, and to the counties where we serve members and, and helped out um, for around 3,000 hours of our own staff time. We implemented the Blooming Again Grants, that was for exceptional childrens. We know that many teachers in your community purchase supplies out of their own pockets and so they were lost if there was damage to their classroom and so we were able to do that. And then we also received a contribution of 1,000 backpacks with school supplies, which we were able to deliver into the schools, um, from one of our partner MCOs across the state cardinal innovation. So, to talk about some of the ongoing response that's happening right now in your community. The state initiated the Back at Home, um, program, which is now, um, based on a project that had been done in Texas. It's been quite successful in North Carolina, over 100 families have been rehoused. And, um, the difference in this program, FEMA helps if you're a homeowner. But if you're a renter, you might not have rental insurance, or if you weren't a homeowner at the time of the storm. And so this program will actually assist those folks who were non-homeowners prior to the storm and getting back on their feet with a housing case management program and some housing subsidy initiative. And so, that program is ongoing at this point. If you know someone who experienced, um, significant home damage, not able to be in their home, you can contact 211 and that person can be assessed for eligibility for the program and they'll be referred over to Trillium Health Resources if they're, if they qualify for the program. A second initiative that continues to happen in your area is called Hope for NC. This is a FEMA-funded grant program that began operations in October. Um, we have crisis counselors who are out canvassing your neighborhoods. We have a team of four who works specifically in Beaufort County. Uh, Ethan over there with the blue shirt waving to you is one of those crisis counselors. They provide emotional support, but they also provide linkage with resources. And so, um, initially, we staffed that with our own staff at Trillium, that was about 96 people. The really nice thing about that is we got to see people from IT who don't typically interact in the community in that way, go out and help their, their community and so it was really positive to see that. We ended up staffing this with 86 staff. We have made over 205,000 contacts in the 12 counties that were disaster area that Trillium serves. But here in Beaufort County, that has constituted over 4,800 contacts. And, um, there's a situation in particular that spring to mind with a local business owner who came across our Hope for NC folks and was really struggling to figure out what the right steps were to get back on his feet and to get back running and, uh, we were able to link him with the appropriate resources to be able to do that. We've also helped in some situations with obtaining new furniture, appliances, rooftop repairs, mold remediation. And so, along with that, they offer emotional support to the survivor of the hurricane. So that's ongoing right now. Ethan's going to have some literature, if anyone, uh, knows someone who's still experiencing, um, consequences of the storm, they can certainly get that from him. And the timeliness of this is right now, um, and I should have acknowledged Commissioner Langley, who has served on our regional advisory board, um, he is aware, Medicaid transformation is, is upon us. In November, Nash County will be the first county in Trillium's catchment areas impacted. But in February of 2020, all of the counties in North Carolina will be a part of Medicaid transformation. And what that means is there will be standard plans and then we'll continue to operate as we are right now until July of 2021, when we hope to become a tailored plan. Implication of that is that Trillium staff live, work, and play in the communities that we serve. Those standard plans are commercial insurance plans. They do not have the same requirement, or any requirement really, to respond in the event of a storm. And so, as long as we are here, we're going to have as robust a response as we've always had in, in relation to storms. But something to be aware of is you're talking with your legislators about, um, Medicaid transformation, how that affects the community that you all serve, um, that, that there could be some implication related to storm impact and reaching out to those vulnerable citizens in the time of a storm with those commercials. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Booth.
Where is Ethan's office?
Ethan is community-based, so he is, he is all around. He, um, one day he might be at an event, a health fair, a church, doing a group presentation, and one day he might be going knocking door to door in, in impacted areas.
Somebody actually need him, they just got the bump into it.
No, you can call a phone number and I don't, it's 1-855, you know what I'm talking about? We'll make sure we get it to you. Um, but there's a 1-855 number that they can contact and they'll come in through Trillium and we'll make sure that they, the right county gets to that, because this is covering 12 counties. Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Del Lewis?
Hi, good evening, how are you? Um, so I will keep it short and sweet, uh, because the full 200-page report is online if you would like. Yeah, you're welcome. Um, so I'm just here to talk about the 2018 community health assessment. Um, I know we're in 2019, but states sometimes are funny. Um, so this report, um, the interesting thing about this is it's the first time ever that all 32 eastern counties would partner together to all do the community health assessment at the same time. Uh, in the past, every county has been on different cycles. Um, and what this really means in the scheme of things is that we get to compare apples to apples now. We get to compare to surrounding eastern counties versus mountainous counties, that's who they gave us to compare to before. Um, so Beaufort County leading causes of death, this is something that's in most every report, but it's also something that strives our programs and our services and other things around us as well. But, um, these really didn't change much. Cancer, accidental injuries, and heart disease, uh, as well as chronic lower respiratory diseases were identified as Beaufort County's leading causes of death. Um, the death rates of cerebrovascular disease, diabetes, cancer, diseases of the heart, and age-adjusted death rates. I won't go over all the numbers, but the big thing to notice is that there is a huge discrepancy between African-American and white, non-Hispanic in all of those, um, causes of death. That also helps us target, um, populations that are most at need with the programs that directly impact those causes of death that you see here in Beaufort County. Um, from the community health assessment, uh, there's surveys, there is focus groups, there's interviews, and then there is voting upon voting. But the top four focus areas are narrowed down, because there's tons. And the four that were assessed were access to health services, education, exercise, nutrition, and weight, and then substance abuse. So those are our four focus areas. And what we do, um, this drives our next four years until we do another community health assessment and hopefully, when that one comes out, we've seen improvement in these areas. The hard part about it is that it takes more than four years, it takes a lot more than that. Uh, but our goal is to make a little move on the needle in some way, shape, or form. Um, obviously, substance abuse, that is the only different, um, topic area versus our last community health assessment. And that's just with the trend and the way things are going with the opioid and substance abuse epidemic. Um, another huge thing is primary care provider rate. Um, this just is comparison to North Carolina as well as United States. It is per 100,000 and you see that Beaufort County, we are at 40,000. Um, that means that people, um, are not going to probably get their care that they need, whether they don't have a doctor, uh, whether they can afford it, whether it's health insurance. And in that survey report, that lovely 200 pager, um, there is more and more reasons in, uh, surveys into why that provider care or primary care may be low. Mental health provider rate was also assessed, Beaufort County, we are also below the needle on that compared to the state as well as the United States, and that again is per 100,000. So, one of the questions, because I did want to kind of, um, put it in there, why Beaufort County may be lacking on the provider rate. When we asked our survey respondents, and we asked over 400-plus surveys, or we collected over 400-plus surveys recently, 28, uh, percent said no appointment, so that means we're so full, we're overbooked, that no one can get an appointment. And then the wait is too long, so even when you do get an appointment, you're there for long periods of time. And then 35% said no health insurance. So those were the top three reasons that really drove why they do not seek, uh, or don't go to a doctor. High school dropout, uh, Beaufort County high school students were at 3.2% compared to North Carolina, which is at 2.4%. Um, and then those that have obtained, uh, a high school degree or higher, I actually put in here because I felt it was a little bit more pertinent, those that don't have a degree, um, 25 and older that don't have a high school degree or higher, and that's about 15.3%. And we know that education, uh, is a big component into jobs and therefore economy and so forth, so forth. Um, exercise, nutrition, and weight, 34.7% of Beaufort County residents are obese and that's not just the BMI greater than 25, it's actually greater than 28. About a third of our population, um, is obese. And then 39.5% in correlation to that, uh, of residents said that they do not have a recreation or a facility in which they could live a distance, relatively distant, the way that they could utilize. And then substance abuse. So 13.6% of Beaufort County residents currently use tobacco products. I know a lot of, uh, individuals automatically go to the big stuff, but tobacco is a substance abuse as well. 15.6, 6% of Beaufort County residents drink excessively, and that's greater than five for men in one sitting and greater than four for women. 18.2 death rate, uh, due to drug poisoning in Beaufort County, and then 16.2 compared to North Carolina. So we are above that. Beaufort County unintentional medication and drug overdose death, um, the main portion of this slide is not anything in regards to population, but males, um, they're usually between the ages of 25 to 64, about half percent of males, or excuse me, half percent of ages 25 to 64, and then 91% of whites. So that again is a targeted population in which we know a lot of our efforts have been geared toward. Parceration rate per 100,000, Beaufort County is 479 versus North Carolina 277. Violent crime rate, we're at a rate of 291.5 compared to North Carolina, which is 374.9. And that is the modest of everything, I told you I was going to be fat. But, do y'all have any questions?
39% of Beaufort County is overweight?
Yes. Abute.
Abute.
Yes, sir.
Why?
How long do we have? Um, so again, that.
I mean, we have, we have the facilities to, uh, here in Beaufort County to work out. We have park and recreations where people can get out and, and move around. 39% seems like a lot to me.
So, well, the good news is all of America is on obese, which is not that good. But, as far as recreation and facilities, it's a huge, um, indicator regarding distance to a facility. Because you're going to go into barriers such as transportation. You don't have a car, uh, which in that lovely report, it goes into that. You don't have a car, um, and you rely on bats, but if you don't have money, then you can't pay bats and you can't get into a facility. Um, for example, I know that I took people around, um, Beaufort County in general because they were looking at active routes to school. A lot of our schools are off major highways and lots of parents are not going to let their kids even walk to school. Um, so that's a huge thing, plus food and nutrition. Uh, again, money, we, you stem back to education, education affects jobs, jobs affect income, you have a low income. Um, food comes a little bit hard, access, healthy food, corner stores, um, we don't have that. have that. Um, and then again, it comes down to education. If individuals go and don't even know, uh, I don't know, a mango looks like, then it's going to be very hard for them to know that is a fruit and it's good for them and balance and portioning plates, and there's a lot of indicators that go into why we are that way.
One question.
Mm-hmm.
Out of that 39%, how many are 15 and under?
So that is in the report. I do not know right off the top of my head. Um-
Just a guess.
Yes. Um, I guess 25%?
25%.
Yeah. Unfortunately, our increase in obesity rates are also being seen more so in our children and younger, and that trend is, again, it's a lot family-oriented too. Like, for example, even my personal life, my grandma taught my mom how to cook and my mom taught me how to cook. And the habits that we are or that we do in our families, again, carry on generational. Um, so it's huge that we also teach our kids young, so again, that that trait doesn't continue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Janelle. We're finished with items for presentations. We're going to move-
Would it be appropriate to take a short break? Is it appropriate to take a short break?
We can take a short recess, thank you.
Rita Hamilton raised issues still here?
Thank you for your time. My mom's death struck not only our family but also the community. Domestic canine DNA findings are to be expected considering the fact that the dogs were on the scene with their owners who were attempting to help mom. The dogs showed no signs of having just participated in this vicious attack. They weren't bloody, wet, or aggressive. The nature of mom's injuries were not typical of a dog, of a dog attack, and we do appreciate the Sheriff's Department and the Commission in your attempts to continue to help us find the body.
Ms. Mash?
Thank you for letting me speak tonight as well again. I'm compelled to stay on topic about our jail. Word partnership was spoken in this room during last month's budget hearing. I wonder what weight or meaning it holds in this room when thinking of the representation for every person in this county. It's not the notion of any school being permanently closed that I fear, it's that of closed minds. More than once I've heard criticism of the outfitting of this building. I don't begrudge it, it makes me believe you at least somehow want the appearance of standards. I am unsettled by all the monitors in this room though. I look at them thinking about where any money that could possibly be squeezed out of safekeeping or capital improvement during the 1.535 million jail door upgrade and where that squeezed money could be put to good use. I think about these monitors and wonder about our standards. I hear the words control and bad management and stupid in this room and feel we are all degraded. When I hear criticism of our justice system, I ask, aren't we all party to the workings and standards of our justice system? Why haven't the courts, the lawyers, been given our support and the facility with reasonable tools to do their job? Just as you have the tools here to do your job, what would it take for you to pit us just one, just one two-way video for lawyer-client competency? Please don't tell me it's too much when I see now what it's going toward propping up our sorry jail. It's condemnation on us all that we've let the jail issue consume so many years with only more debt, more deterioration, and probably more lawsuits on the way to show for it. I'm just as sick of speaking about the jail ad nauseam as you probably are of hearing it. Please let us know the progress on planning for a new facility. It's time we put forward a resolution that makes sense. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. We're down to items for consent. I need a motion to approve items for-
Motion to approve.
We've got a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, five-two, motion passes. Ten seconds. We're down to items for decision. Mr. Head pass?
Thank you, Chairman Evans and Board. Um, I have a first request before you. Um, our EMS staff is requesting the approval of a new lease agreement for six LifePact 15 monitors. Um, as you see in the agenda that was given to you, we currently have a lease agreement, uh, with Phillips Medical Capital, uh, for five monitors. These monitors were brought in as standard equipment in the origination of EMS in Beaufort County as Beaufort County EMS system. Um, in that original contract or in that original lease, the service agreement was only for two years, but was not for the time of that contract. Uh, we're constantly having some issues with those monitors. Um, we have looked at being able to to move to, um, newer technology and add a six monitor to that, uh, as you see inside of the agreement in front of you. Um, due to the age of the monitors, it's now taken longer to find parts for repair. When one of our current monitors, um, has has issues, we're having to mail those off. It is not a person that comes here and repairs. Also in our medical supplies, uh, every time we hook a monitor to a patient, there are some throwaway items that have to be done. Our medical suppliers are starting to have back orders at times for the age of these monitors and getting those things in. And, uh, quite frankly, in the last six months, we've had two failures of monitors actually on the scene with the cathography that takes place with those. We were fortunate, we had a another unit of QRV there, being able to pull a second monitor in on both of those. Um, Glenn, uh, in his QRV has, uh, it's not one of these five monitors, he has a sixth monitor that was kind of put together, you might would say. It is, it is working now, but we've been told if it has any other issues, it will not be able to be repaired. And to keep his vehicle in a QRV status, we need to have that six monitor. So there are some reliability issues. The new monitors have better diagnostic measurements for dealing with heart attacks. They have the ability to populate information directly to our charts, which is something new for us. Um, all service for these monitors, including the cost of batteries and all other things, would be included in the lease for the entire time of the monitor. Um, and it would add, of course, another monitor for the operations. So we're requesting, um, that you approve us being able to move forward this lease agreement. It binds out our previous lease agreement and, um, would allow us to put a six monitor in service.
How old are these monitors?
How old did you give me this back? Four years old.
Four years old, and how often are they used?
Every day.
Yes, sir, on every patient. And you, uh, said right now you're having problems finding parts for them or repairing?
Yes, sir. Phillips Medical Capital cannot guarantee that we have repairability of these models over the next two years. Very difficult finding simple things like therapy cable. It took us six months to buy therapy cables to replace monitors. Also, our batteries have gone up from three to $600 per battery, and they're very difficult to find. We don't even manufacture these batteries anymore. We're having to go to batteries plus to try to have these batteries remanufactured. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Only question I have, and and I'm, I'm going to vote for this. If you have these problems for six months, why you didn't do it during the budget time?
Actually, this, uh, thank you for asking that question.
Yeah, I knew you had an answer.
You know I did. It's actually in our budget and approved, so I'm asking to use approved budget money for this. This was in our budget.
Mr. Richardson?
Uh, these units, when did, when were those models first come out?
MRX monitor came out about five years ago and was initially introduced as an in-hospital monitor only, and Phillips Medical Capital marketed it to the EMS market as an economic alternative to more expensive options like Dole or Pedigo's or other models.
But now you say you use these on every patient that you have. Well, how many cardiac patients do you have? One thing to use it on every patient is another thing to need it.
We typically on a patient assessment, with even just a simple, simple medical patient, we're evaluating our cardiac output. We're doing a 12-liter, doing a cardiac evaluation, and every patient has a prior by guideline.
Well, I'm going to stick to this. How many cardiac patients have you hauled in the last year?
Looking at statistics, I believe we've hauled probably about 65, 70% of our patients with cardiac-related problems.
70% of the people that call EMS in Beaufort County are cardiac or heart attack patients.
Heart attack patients, either directly or indirectly related to cardiac issues. Septus patients have permanent cardiac issues, trauma patients have cardiac issues. Actual percentage of stimies that we have in the county, we probably have about 35% of heart attack patients in the county of Beaufort throughout all the systems in Beaufort County that operate in Beaufort.
Okay, what is the basis that you're coming for the commit, to the Commissioners for approval of this? If it's in the budget, why are you here?
It's, uh, it's over $30,000, and according to our purchasing policy, anything over $30,000 must come back to the Commissioner.
It's also a multi-year contract.
Now, when did this model that you're buying, when was it first introduced to the public?
2012, 2013, continual upgrades.
Well, you see, the ones that you're replacing were five years old and you're throwing them in the trash can. This one's over five years old, so what are you going to throw it in the trash can? When are you going to come back to us and want another one?
The difference in this, this contract is it's all-inclusive for everything that would go wrong with these monitors. Um, so it includes the service plan for the entire time of the lease agreement. It includes the battery life for the entire time of the lease agreement. And with that, instead of us putting them in a box and sending them off, we would have a representative that would bring us a monitor to use in its place, uh, while this is going on. So some of the issues we're having now, they are showing us a system that that would be able to answer.
Where is your vendor located?
Raleigh area. I think it's Raleigh, but he's through our area at least once every two weeks, uh, making contact with us as he goes through. Cardiac monitors is not the only thing that they do.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the same thing again. This is a lot of money. You're talking about, I think, what, $52,000? Uh, uh, is that's per year?
Yes, sir.
See, we're talking about a very expensive item, and to, and to tell me that you need it for every patient that you pick up, you know, I just don't go for. And I can remember when we didn't do them at all, and we probably had the same, uh, mortality that we have now. So, you know, I don't think this stuff's really needed, so that's, that's where I am with it.
Yeah. I make a motion to change this.
Is there a second?
Uh, I'll second that.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, five-two, passes. I'm sorry. Six-one, I'm. All right.
If I may go ahead with the, the second item. This has to do with emergency management. Uh, as you see in the agenda abstract, we have a position that was vacant as of May. It was, uh, the position that Lisa Williams was holding in our office. Uh, we left this position vacant, um, trying to, to really take a good evaluation of exactly what our office needs. Uh, Lisa, Lisa did many things for us and and did a good job with that. One of the main things being our mitigation work, and we still need that piece, uh, of the puzzle in, in, in going forward. Um, one thing we, we have noticed in our agency altogether, the world is, is, uh, moving quickly. A lot of data is requested, um, almost on a weekly basis. We need that to be able to analyze in all of our different services. The other thing we're doing in emergency services is we're getting out of the silo of one particular piece of emergency management, only doing emergency management, EMS only doing EMS, animal control only doing animal control. We, we really are helping each other out in all of those areas. Um, we have put in some, some software issues that should help us with, with our data, with our reporting to be a little bit more efficient in things we're doing. You see those listed in the agenda abstract. Um, Orion Disaster Preplanning, um, is a software we've just put in that will help us prepare in the disasters, but also to, um, it links with, with our county records, property records, as we're going out doing damage assessments and starts giving us live data of that. The imagery and fire reporting, um, up until this point, all of our, our fire inspections have been done just on an Excel spreadsheet, and, um, with that, we, we've improved that data both in our reporting for that. It gives us our, our, uh, sets and times that we should go out and do the inspections. It gives us information pulled from our different inspection lists. Um, EMS software is constantly moving, our web EOC, everything we do from our EOC computer base with the state web EOC system. So in short, at, at times, even when, when you guys ask us for a report, a lot of times in our data mining, that means somebody's sitting down having to actual count things. And we know in today's time, that should not be the case. We should be able to quickly be able to produce those reports. And, um, with the software, we want these softwares to be able to talk together. So we see more of a need in addition to the responsibilities that were already there to be able to have some IT, um, experience in our office, someone who's really familiar with, with being able to, to work at a deeper level in the computer system. I have looked, um, through the, the county pay plan. Um, this particular pay plan, uh, what I'm asking for reclassification, the position was at a 12. Um, I'm asking for it to go to a pay grade 17. That is the first pay grade comparable to it. As we look in our county pay plan, there's three that have to do with system management or IT management itself. Uh, 17 is the first one, the second one's a 19, and then there's a 25. Um, I'm not asking for additional funds for this. A lot of times when we're doing this, this data collection in what I call the manual way, we're having to use part-time staff to do that, and I would just simply like to be able to move over part-time monies to cover any difference of the salary grade in it.
Within this position, you talk about a two-year, uh, degree, degreed person?
In, in the, in the, it would, it would be written as others, others state in the same thing comparable with the county, it would be recommended that the person would have a two-year degree with that, but it would not be a requirement.
Yeah, see, that's a problem with me. When you're going to pay this amount of money to somebody, they need to have proven themselves by having a two-year degree, because my next question is this. The way this looks to me is that it is targeting to an individual who can use these four or five programs. That's a whole lot different from a college-trained, two-year degree in computer science or something that can walk in and, and handle just about any program that you put in front of. There's a big difference here, and I'm against the good buddy system. So if you're targeting some good buddy to go into this job, I'm going to tell you right now, you're going to have trouble.
If you think my character would target somebody for a job, we already have to. And I'm disappointed in that.
The fingerprints are here, though. What you submitted, you gave the wrong answer when you said they didn't have to have a two-year degree.
You can talk about a lot of things, but my integrity will not be one of them.
We're not talking about your integrity. We're talking about-
That's exactly what you did. You just attacked my integrity.
You're trying to make this personal. This is not personal. The person who has this job should have a two-year degree. That should be a requirement.
The reason it's not a requirement, it's a recommendation, not a requirement, is because with anything, we cannot guarantee that we're going to get the two-year degree even for this salary money. And so are we going to go without filling the position? Or could we find somebody? To find somebody that knows just this, this technology, I doubt we'll find a person. I don't know a person that could say, I know all five of those. It's going to have to be somebody who learned that.
But you're here pleading to upgrade your department. That's one of the ways to upgrade the department, is people that are better educated filling the positions within the department, and I'm not going to support this salary range unless they have a two-year degree.
Chairman. I, I move that we approve the, uh, reclassification of the position.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, five-two, motion passes. Thank you, Lord.
Evening Commissioners. First item that I have before you this evening is regarding, uh, the disposal of the scrap tires. As noted in your agenda packet, per North Carolina general statutes, tires may not be disposed of in landfills. Uh, what I have presented before you this evening is a multi-year contract with Central Carolina Holdings, which is a recycler of the tires. Uh, it's presented to you because it is a multi-year contract and for our purchasing policy, uh, it needs to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, just a general summary, Central Carolina Holdings, we have a contract with them in the past. There has not been a rate increase since twenty-twelve. Uh, and they are asking for a five percent increase in the processing fee, modifying the freight charge. And they're also, um, modifying the way that the fuel surcharge is calculated, uh, and also adding the CPI, which is pretty standard of contracts at this time. Again, it hasn't been revised since twenty-twelve.
Is this one of these things that we put out for bids?
We did, we did not because it's a service contract and because they are the only person in eastern North Carolina. Surrounding counties also use them. I contacted other solid waste companies. And there are other companies that provide the service, that they take their tires to Central Carolina Holdings to be recycled.
Commissioner Langley.
Ms. Smith, this is your recommendation to put the field of debt.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, on page two forty, I, I don't understand the spreadsheet that's on there. It starts off with solid waste fees increase. Is that the solid waste fees that we've already increased? Is that a revenue line item that's gonna come from somewhere?
That's the next, the next item.
Oh, I'm in the wrong.
That's the second.
Wait a minute. Does this have to do with tires?
No, sir. That does not have to do.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
That's, that's the, that's the next item that I have.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
No, sir. They're currently, this would be included in the current year budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero.
The next item before you, Commissioner Richardson, that you spoke of is the budget amendment request. Uh, there are additional funds that are needed to pay our invoices to cover fiscal year twenty-nineteen. Um, and I'll just go ahead and accept that we talked about this two months ago and I believe Commissioner Lee said, well, I'll be back again. And I said, I hope not, but I am back again. You are correct. Um, but it, it is for, for, uh, costs that were incurred during fiscal year twenty-nineteen. Uh, so the, these are live, these are, um, costs that the county needs to pay vendors that provided services to us. Again, we've had numerous discussions about how tonnage would increase and decrease and that type of thing. But this would be sufficient to cover all costs for occurring during fiscal year twenty-nineteen. And again, because this is an enterprise fund, you must, uh, appropriate their difference.
Second?
I'll second. Going to, going to page two forty again. Uh, the solid waste fees, fifty thousand dollars, is that, do you take all of these items and add them up to get to the amount of money that you want?
The finance officer can also explain that specifically, but if you look for fifty thousand, you have the fifteen, the eleven, and the twenty-four. If you sum the fifteen, eleven, and twenty-four, that sums to fifty, so she's actually re-appropriating solid waste fees. That's correct. When I looked at the solid waste collection fees for prior year, they came in actually eighty thousand dollars over what was projected. We estimated that we needed an additional fifty thousand on the expense side to cover the overdue in solid waste. So I appropriated that fifty thousand dollar portion of that eighty thousand in additional revenue to cover the expenses in lieu of a transfer from the general fund.
Okay, so what we're asking for is to appropriate fifty thousand dollars from the solid waste fees. And we're gonna use it for these three items that are listed below there.
Correct.
Okay. Well, you know, re, revenue and expense are usually not on the same column, and that's very confusing when it's that way.
Any other discussions?
Uh, you can see both revenues and expenses as an increase or decrease. So what this is saying to us is we're increasing the overall budget in solid waste by fifty thousand dollars. And to have a balanced budget, we have to do that on both sides. So we're increasing the revenue budget by fifty thousand and the expense by fifty thousand.
Normal, normal accounting, you don't mix apples and oranges. You don't mix revenue with expense, and that's a problem. That's what I'm saying. And we've been doing this for a long time. I'd like to see you take a look at calling revenue, revenue, and expense, expense. And for us, the poor old country boys, we can understand it then.
Okay, the first line on page two forty is a revenue, so we're increasing solid waste fees revenues by fifty thousand. The next three lines are expenditures of fifteen thousand, eleven thousand, and twenty-four thousand. They are expenses, and if you add fifteen thousand, eleven thousand, and twenty-four thousand, that is fifty thousand.
Well, I'm gonna say the same thing again. You don't put revenues and expenses in the same column and add them together and say they balance. Now, we must've went to different accounting schools, and I'm gonna let it rest at that.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, if you look at the top of the column, it says increase, so it's an increase in the expense for all three of those items. Am I correct on that? It, it's not, it's, it's not a debit and a credit or a revenue and expense column. It, it's saying that the expense, that line item increased by that amount of money.
Let's just call it Beaufort County Accounting, which we already know is.
No, sir. That's right. I, I, I wanna speak of that. You can make comments that it's not appropriate because you don't understand it. It is the way the budget is done. It is done correctly, and our finance officer is doing it correctly. We've had this conversation before. She teaches this class. The local government commission has her teach classes on this. She's a certified finance officer, and she knows what she's doing, and we're happy to explain it to you. But don't tell us that we're doing it wrong when we're doing it right.
I'm still telling you, you're doing it wrong.
Commissioners, the last item that I have for you this evening is the recommendation to award a contract to Montgomery Technology Systems. Again, this is the company that we've been working with for a few months regarding, uh, the renovation or the replacement of the locking system in our current Beaufort County detention center. Uh, through much negotiation and many weeks and going back and forth with Montgomery Technology Systems. Uh, what is, uh, the total contract is included in your agenda packet. Uh, the recommendation is to award to Montgomery Technology Systems an amount of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand and sixty-five dollars. Again, just as a brief summary, the scope of work in this contract is to replace the entire locking system in the facility, including the slider, sliding devices. Also included a tentative contract schedule, just so that everyone understands what we are looking at. Uh, if the contract is awarded this evening, also be providing the notice to proceed tomorrow. Uh, MTS, they are forecasting taking approximately ten weeks to provide submittals. After the submittals are received, they will then be submitted to Department of Health and Human Services for review and approval. Uh, Department of Health and Human Services has said that they will complete their review within thirty days. At that time, materials would be ordered, the original base bid materials, which is more of the standard hardware hinges. Uh, non-specialty items, they are anticipating approximately eight-week lead time. For the sliding devices, which are the sliding cell doors, uh, looking at approximately fourteen-week lead time for materials arrived. That would start installation in the middle of December and final completion in approximately four weeks. MTS has, uh, we've had discussion with MTS about, uh, the availability of the facility. It is our hope and our plan to minimize the amount of time that the facility would be running at this rate. But of course, again, as we spoke about before, there are certain types of activities, torching, welding, that type of thing with the facility. Uh, at this time, we do not believe additional funds will need to be allocated because funds were included in the budget previously for the off-site housing.
Seven hundred and seventy-two thousand and sixty-five dollars, is rather exact. Uh, is there, you think it'll beat that amount? Could it be more? Could it be less? They still don't know exactly everything they need, do they?
I, I think it could be more, or I think it could be less. Um, but, no, sir, they do not. Again, this is a renovation, so much residential construction, new construction, you're able to nail down your cost a little bit better. If it's a renovation, you are adapting and adjusting to the current conditions that you encounter during the renovation.
So this will be a sliding scale, so to speak, for lack of a better phrase, where we will be made aware of expenses and allocated needs. Hopefully, it could be on the lower side. Is there any way to govern that properly?
I'm not exactly sure how to answer, govern it properly.
Well, I mean, you.
It's a.
And us.
I'm not a government, so I can't technically govern.
You work for the government.
I, I do. I do, and I work hard for the government, so I will manage this project. It's a construction project. Um, but I would be amiss to say that, that I would not be in the facility one hundred percent of the time that a contractor is working. Um, it's a typical construction contract. We've done our due diligence. The contractors have come in, they've done inspection, they've booked, they've provided us with a number, with a quote. Uh, this contract, I'm not sure if any of you counted the number of pages, but it's a lot of pages. We did, um, a lot of energy and effort has gone into it to find the scope of work so that we know what will be done. So we know what is included in that exact number. Uh, if there are changes needed or changes that are required in order to get an operation, operating system that's too standard, changes would be required in the finance. I will do, staff will do everything that we can to minimize that.
Would there be any, uh, machinists, uh, upgrade, uh, using any, any machinists to make things happen, make them work when, uh, there's nothing available at that time?
Based upon the scope of work that's included in this contract, any type of machinery's work will hopefully be minimized. Uh, the contractor, based upon the quotes that they've received, that what's included in this is more of a complete demolition and a replacement, not a refurbishment.
Commissioner Brennan?
I believe the meeting that I was, uh, in with the, uh, with the gentleman that, uh, came down, he said that most of his projects came in under the, uh, the quote. It's like any other construction project. Once you get involved in it, you're gonna run across things that, that you couldn't see before. So that's why you have a contingency to, to make sure that you have the money to pay for it. So, uh, but I, I believe him when he said that most of his projects came in under, he, uh, very nice gentleman. Thank you.
Mr. Brennan, if you notice, I didn't ask Ms. Smith about the change order or anything like that. That was purposely done. Whatever you bring back to us, we're gonna have to pay for it. I mean, you cannot go in that old jail and say exactly what's gonna happen.
The, uh, there's so much money in this thing. It's, it's unreal. He's gonna bring it in under the budget. Uh, the, because what you're doing is installing a whole bunch of new stuff that's been manufactured off-site. There's not, you know, the mill type stuff that, that would be done for a normal repair on there. Uh, how much money is in this contract or in this, um, in this, uh, budget item for engineers and architects?
Not include, that is not included in this particular contract. However, I've had numerous discussions with Department of Health and Human Services, and they, they require mission of plans for projects that are done in the facilities to be skilled by either an engineer or by an architect. The Montgomery Technology Systems does not employ an architect that is licensed to practice in North Carolina. They do, however, employ an engineer. So it is the hope that their submittal, the middle plans, so plans that they will prepare in-house that will allow them to purchase the appropriate materials and also instruct their workers on where to install the products, that those submittals will be sufficient for the Department of Health and Human Services to view. That's the, that would be best-case scenario. However, until those submittal documents are prepared, Department of Health and Human Services will not tell us that. So the current plan is after the contract is awarded and Montgomery Technology Systems is working full-time for us in preparation for this project, I'll set up a conference call with Department of Health and Human Services, provide them with a sample of what this submittal drawings will look like. And at that time, Department of Health and Human Services will let us know if that will be sufficient for their needs to review. If it is not sufficient for their needs to review, then we would need to go out and contract with an architect or an engineer based upon whatever Department of Health and Human Services has to do.
Are you, are you telling, uh, the state that this is a repair item? Or are you telling them that this is a refurbishing and a redesign?
I'm telling the state that we are taking out a repair.
That's a repair item.
So how they interpret that, they know exactly what we are doing. How they interpret that is to be.
You know, I, I would like to see, have copies of the plans that go to the state for their preliminary review, the preliminary items that you're sending, and I would also like to be on the conference call. Cause, uh, this, um, how this is submitted is vital. We're not gonna get into something where we tear a jail down and then have people tell us we gotta build a new jail. This is repair, and I've constantly thought that this is repair and struggled against these five members of this board and the manager and you, that this is not a redesign. This is a repair, and it's been a battle. And it's gonna continue to be a battle, and I intend to just be involved in this thing right up to the state approval. And to be involved with seeing the plans and sitting, and, and sitting on whatever an architect or an engineer comes to confer, I want to be there.
Commissioner Langley.
Manager of the finance office, if anyone can answer the question. Do you remember what the debt service would have been per year on the, on the new facility?
I believe when we looked at it, the debt payment on a twenty million dollar borrowing, twenty or twenty-five years, was about a million and a half a year. It was about two and a half pennies on our tax rate.
And, and I believe we're about spending that yearly ever since, uh, the, the new facility was killed. Am I correct?
Have to go back and pull the numbers. I know we'll spend it this year. I'm not sure about the previous year, so I've only been here three years. But I can go back and pull those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith, since you have worked so good on this project, since I believe you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna come back and ask us for some more money because I know what you're working with, I make a motion that we approve this contract.
Is there a second? Discussion? How to vote? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Five to two passes. Thank you.
Six one.
Six to one. Did it go again? He had it.
He had it.
The annual NCACC conference coming up, um, August twenty-second through to the twenty-fourth in Guilford County is being held, and you're required to have a voting delegate designated to cast votes during the annual conference.
Customarily, we, we always, uh, the voting delegate is the chairman and the alternate is the vice, so.
I'll, I'll second that.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven zero, seven to eight.
Okay. I, I moved that, well, let me make a comment first. I, I saw, I heard a lot of things that said dogs did this, and at the same time, I heard a lot of information that said dogs didn't do this. So, this is very, very questionable as to what's going on here. Uh, there's no question that there's additional evidence for the sheriff to pursue with bone fragments and hair and some other things, which I'm presuming that that's gonna be done in that particular, by the sheriff. It's his duty and his responsibility. And I think the lady who made the presentation on the DNA, I do not have a bit of problem with her credentials, I don't have a bit of problem with what she presented, but I've submitted a lot of samples in my lifetime, even rock samples, and there's always a second go at it. There's always an overlook just in case a mistake is made, and there's always protocols and methods and standards and the whole world of things out there to make sure that you have reliable information. We don't have, we haven't done that in this particular case. So, I moved that the county appropriate, I'm gonna say thirty-five hundred dollars for the purpose of hiring a DNA expert on K-9, and they are here, somebody sent me an email with somebody out in the Midwest, that's one of the world's experts in this, for a review and additional testing if necessary, so that the Brenda Hamilton thing can be brought to a final conclusion. And that's my motion, and I will add after the motion that the family and the citizens of Beaufort County deserve to know if there's an answer that can be wrung out of this, they deserve to know the answer, and if an answer can't be wrung out of this, they deserve to know that too.
Mr. Richardson, since you wrote in your, in your illustrious newspaper that I say it, I knew it, and I am, I will second your motion.
Thank you. What is?
Uh, Commissioner Richardson, I, I guess, uh, before you pull the consultant in, do you go ahead and, and do the test and let Western Carolina do the testing on the hair and the fiber, or does that go to another? To me, if you're gonna get a consultant to take a look at it, we, we need to do the other testing before we bring that person in.
Well, I, I, I understand the reasoning that goes into this, but we're dealing with something that, just like all matters, it's the greater weight of the evidence, so I wouldn't hold back on, on when we do what, because it's gonna be a slow, dragged-out process anyway. Let's go ahead and do this while the sheriff simultaneously does his thing with the samples that he has.
Well, you didn't, you didn't say.
You had to, Brennan.
That brings.
I just need to clarify something. Uh, uh, Mr. Richardson, what you're saying is we're going to let Western Carolina do their thing and then they will take that, uh, information and send it to this particular DNA expert out there, is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is that, hey, all of the information that's been done by, uh, Western Carolina would be subject to review by the DNA expert. He is our consultant, he would look at that and say, I think you ought to do this, or I think you ought to do that, or I think you've done all you can do. Whatever the result, whatever the answer is, it's, it's a second and independent, objective, third-party review of the whole situation is what we're looking for, and that requires a DNA expert in this particular case. DNA is forensic, forensic, so we don't even need to say forensic.
Charlie, do you like to?
Just for the commissioner's benefit, um, the testing that has been done, um, we're paying out of a fund that is appropriated through the budget each year, but we put money in for testing just for any other crime scenes or anything that we do, as far as that goes. Um, and I, it, it forces a prerogative on the board, but if we are talking about testing, that could be thirty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. That is something that is already in our budget that we have that we can do, we just have to have the determination of what is gonna be done and where. So, I just, I just throw that out there, that that's already something that is thought about, negotiated, and part of the budget that we have that we just started here in July, so I just wanted to make that, um, thank the commissioners.
I understand where, where you're coming from with that, Charlie, but we need the end, and, and go ahead with what you're doing, but we need the independent, third-party oversight consultant to look from a hundred miles up in the air back down and see what's going on with, with what we are doing, and that money could be drawn from your money. I don't have a problem with that.
And, and that's, that's where I'm going to. I think the discussion is what can be done and what needs to be done, and I think that's a very valid discussion. Um, and, but it, to me, it's no different than any other budgetary item that i- if we were to run into, when it shortfalls near the end of the year because of other light testing to do that, then it can always come back before you and ask for an appropriation of money then, if that would be the appropriate thing.
Well, I, I think so. I would like to be involved in this selection of consultant, not from the standpoint that I pick the consultant, I'd just like to see the qualifications of the people, the presenters that might be doing that.
And I believe through the course of the conversation that has been had and maybe the feeling of the community that's involved, I think that there probably would be a good idea to have a decision made based, that, that may be away from law enforcement, maybe if it's the federal, state, or local level, when it comes to something like this, just to give a, a clear and third, uh, third-party answer. So, there's absolutely no problem with that.
Let me respond to that too, and I, I agree with what you said, Charlie, uh, and from the standpoint that you've got some other agencies of the government that are, uh, uh, law enforcement to a certain extent, like North Carolina Wildlife, Federal Wildlife, you have these other agencies that are involved in that, so that's one of the reasons for the third-party look at the whole thing, because that takes us away out of, as you say, from the whole regime, and when you get an answer, you've got an answer, you don't have to argue about who influenced what.
I agree.
Motion is?
Uh, my motion is to, uh, is to hire, if you're gonna take it out of the sheriff's budget, that's fine, but to hire an independent, third-party DNA expert, uh, to, to, as a consultant in this effort to determine the cause of death of Ms. Hamilton and to review all of the data that he feels pertinent.
You hear money?
Well, he said it would come out of his budget, so you don't have a money limit when you go to the sheriff's budget, it's already in the sheriff's budget to do this, so.
I don't think it will come back to thirty-five thousand dollars.
No, he said, he said thirty-five hundred to five thousand. He upped it from what I said, and I don't have a problem with that.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Three to eight passes.
Question is, Bobby's here, when are you gonna send out the tax bill?
Um, I'm here to talk about tax bills. I've had probably the worst year I've had since I've been here with, uh, people being sick. As you know, I lost, one of the ladies lost her husband, back, back four weeks ago. I have two ladies that their fathers, uh, have stage four cancer, which are getting to, I'm letting them have time off to get with their fathers, uh, therapy. I have compassion that knocks me back, and I said, I'm, uh, tonight, and I think probably yesterday, the week of the fifth of August, early could be a couple days later.
I'm here to log those.
Well, the rea, uh, the reason I put this thing on the agenda is, um, the, well, I'll just say it point-blank, people say I'm blunt, I'll say it, I don't like getting my information about lawsuits in Beaufort County from the television set. Uh, that's not the place that we should be getting that kind of information, and that's why I put this on here. Uh, in particular, we've got the lawsuit against the sheriff's department, and everybody's running around saying, well, nobody's been served, we don't know anything about a lawsuit, but you, you have the fact that it has been filed in federal court, so there must be a lawsuit, and then you have allegations that are made, and this allegation's made, and that allegation's made, and I'm saying, well, who's representing Beaufort County? What is the status of this particular situation? So, the request that I made of the manager about two weeks ago is, I wanna know about everything in any way that anybody might be suing Beaufort County. Uh, we had a situation about seven or eight years ago where the sheriff took it on himself to spend five thousand dollars of the county's money to sue a former employee over three hundred and sixty dollars. I mean, when you got that kind of thinking going on, you sort of wanna stay close to what's going on, so my question to the attorney and the manager both is, what do you know about this lawsuit that's out there that could cost the county a lot of money?
I'm talking about the lawsuits, uh, the Frank's lawsuits, and Shepherd's lawsuits, and the other different people's lawsuits, and this, the devil's lawsuit. Plus, that lawsuit.
Those cases, I understand, have been turned over to our liability insurance carrier, being defended by the company, or by a law firm that is, uh, represents our liability carrier. So, what I know about it is, after the EOC, and, uh, they decided not to, to go with it, they got the letters, uh, that were, uh, sent down to the particular bring suit, and they brought suit. I don't think that we can receive, uh, complaints or anything on that.
Well, no, sheriff says, like, uh... Oh, man, Lynn. The, the sheriff said for the press this week that he would be responding, the sheriff's office would be responding to this lawsuit. Now, when you look at the scenario where a former sher, wasn't this sheriff, former sheriff went out and hires a lawyer to sue somebody, I'm wondering, has the sheriff hired his own lawyer in this? How are we doing this? And if you don't know, and you're the county attorney, what I'm gonna sit here as a commissioner and say, you should know, that's your job.
I don't know what the sheriff, I saw that in the newspaper, I do not know what the sheriff may do. Uh, he came out as a sheriff, and he's been terminated, he's lost, that much I know.
Well, and, you know, I realize that position of staff around here, sheriff is like a different country. It's like dealing with China or Venezuela or somewhere, it's not us, but it is us, because all of that money comes from the taxpayers of Beaufort County. And if Beaufort County taxpayers want to know what's going on, because I'm one of them, and I represent a part of the people of Beaufort County, and if we're in a situation where lawsuits are being filed against employees of the county, I understand some of these, uh, are personal lawsuits, if, uh, and, and the county attorney is telling us that he doesn't know what's going on, then my statement to you is, the next commissioner's meeting, I want to know what's going on. And if you go ask the sheriff and he acts arrogant and tells you it's none of your business, I wanna know that too.
As soon as I receive the complaint, I will let you know that I have not.
That's not what I said. You admitted you know about this, you have knowledge of this, and you're the county attorney, and you're not following up. That is your job, that's what we pay you that eighty thousand dollars a year for.
Yeah, I have something else to say about the lawsuit. Am I allowed to speak, Your Highness? You're the king.
Yeah? Am I allowed to speak? Well, I think Beaufort County's got a problem in this particular area, and with defense of the county attorney, this game has been played in the past that nobody really knew because nobody really wanted to know, because somebody might be responsible. I think those days are over with, I think it's time for Beaufort County to start doing business in a businesslike way, and I think the manager should know about these things too. Undoubtedly, he's seen stuff like this in the paper, and he's very quiet, and that tells me he hasn't followed up either.
I'll tell you what we do know, there have been suits that have been filed, we don't have copies of them, we haven't been served yet, Florida made us aware that they were there. When we hear that, we send a note to our insurance carrier to say, just be on the lookout for this, and as soon as it gets filed, we send that to the insurance carrier for them to look at it. Um, the sheriff's office has engaged counsel, they do that, they can do that, they, they engage counsel to help them respond, uh, to EOC, to help them write to EOC, or the back, uh, which is entirely in the privacy of the real, um, that's what we know about it. In fact, the county attorney actually sent a copy of all this, which he requested a week ago.
Oh, the sheriff's handling its own lawsuit, the county doesn't have anything to do with it, that's what you just told me.
No, that's not what I told you. I told you that the sheriff has engaged counsel to help them on the issues that they have responding to the EOC complaint. Um, we have been advised that there's been a suit filed, um, we, the county has not been served, the sheriff's office, as I understand it, has not been served. Because a plaintiff files a suit and then goes and issues a press release about it, doesn't mean that, that we've been served, so they can beat us to the punch, and, and obviously, that's what they did, and they probably did that on purpose. Uh, but as soon as we get served, then it gets turned over to the county attorney, and we send it to the risk management folks, and they look at it, and they assign outside counsel, and outside counsel works for the county attorney, and that's the process.
Well, the sheriff has hired his own.
Charlie's got, must make a comment. Can you turn your mic up?
In reference to Shepherd and Frank, from the EOC complaint, the lawsuit, we were engaged with our attorney from what's inside, um, for the interactions we've received. So, this isn't anything that's been, um, every time that we've had any issue, whether it's a complaint or whether it's a lawsuit, and I've been in a position, I've been, this is that we've notified the county, we've notified the county attorney, and then I've been copied on emails to the commissioners in reference to notifications. We have received service at the office, I have not forwarded that yet to the, to the county manager or the county attorney or to the commissioners, but I will. Everything that we have done in reference to, to any complaint or any lawsuit or any other time that we would seek counsel from attorney, that we've gone by the rules that we have applied to us by statute and by the rules that are applied by the commissioners, and we'll continue to do that, there's nothing, but, but there are gonna be some times that I'll flat out say now that we are gonna, we are gonna speak as the sheriff's office and the sheriff, we are gonna speak with the attorneys that we're engaged with, and quite frankly, for fear that, um, information that is of, of attorney-client privilege that need to stay that way, that we are not gonna fill the commission everything, because flat out, there's more leaks in this board than, than, and, and a, and a strainer for news. Uh, if, if that is the concern, then that is gonna continue to be a concern, but we are gonna provide the information that we're engaged with. But we are gonna provide the information that we are bound by law and that's the right thing to do.
There's a conflict here because Charlie says he notified the county attorney and the county attorney says he wasn't notified. Which is, you two guys worked this out right here.
Well, well, I think everybody in the room heard the words that I said except maybe you. This complaint is nothing new. It started out as a complaint that was going through E O C. Now it is a lawsuit. So, we have been in contact throughout the whole process. Now, I have been served, but I said that I have not provided the copies to the county manager or the county attorney on that yet, but I will. That's what I said. I remember that because I said it.
Okay, I would like copies of those when they're provided to you. That's public information by the way.
Problem. Uh, Charlie, your attorney and most available, is that provided to you, uh, through your insurance carrier? It, it is now. When the lawsuit was filed, then risk management provides that information to said, covers everything from workman's comp issues to motor vehicle rig issues to lawsuit, lawsuits, just like this. So, they're notified and then the liability pool cover. The first part of the complaint, the, was not covered by the, but that was invoices and things that came through that were paid through the sheriff's office.
Chairman. I would like copies of all of the invoices that were paid for attorneys from the sheriff's office for this lawsuit without the commissioners knowing about it. All of them. Not some of them, not part of them, all of them.
You ready for report?
Oh, this is another one of those little ethical matters that we keep talking about up here that seems to get everybody all hung up. And the, the, last month I brought the ethical matter of, of the chairman and his powers. We're somewhat back to the chairman, but a report was written that took the jail down. It was a hit report. Most of it wasn't true, but it was still written. It was written by the jailer. It was circulated to the press. It was circulated here and there. And it turns out from what I've been able to find out, Mr. Chairman, that you asked the jailer to write the report without the knowledge of the board accounting commissioner. And this thing goes out from a county employee and it becomes gospel. What I'm saying is, that's unethical. This board functions as a board, not as an individual, not with people sneaking around the corner having reports written and then, uh, leaking them to the press. We shouldn't be doing that.
We talking about unethical?
Uh, just a comment on that. I'm sure you've been a lot more times than I have, but I have visited jail on a time to see the conditions for myself. Uh, I threw at, I said, is any way you could just give me some ballpark ideas about more options for the jail? For me, help me out, because I'm, I'm a new commissioner. That's as far as I went with it. Where it got into, using observer wherever you saying it is, I just asked, just give me if we both jail here, we did over here, which I think Mr. Langley will talk about a little later. But that, if I made a mistake there, I certainly apologize. But I don't think I run around and, it's usually hangouts from reports and do different things. But that's okay. I've, I've learned a lesson.
Well, I thank you for that apology and I appreciate the apology. But, you know, we need to be, we need to be functioning as a board. We don't need to have these reports floating around and people out doing things that are employees of the county that they shouldn't be doing, that has a negative impact on everything. This board, as I think this group can see in here tonight, is losing control of what it's doing because nobody really wants to be responsible for anything.
Mr. Ward.
I'm, I'm assuming that what you're saying is that going forward, that when you request something of the, of the county manager, you're gonna bring that to a full board discussion and we're gonna vote on it before the county manager has to provide that information back to you. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I don't have a problem with requests, uh, from any commissioner. As I asked clerk the other day, and this is another funny thing. You know, it's strange to me that when I ask for something, every commissioner gets a copy of it, but I never see anything that any other commissioner asked for. And do you know what the answer was? You're the only commissioner that asks questions. Oh gee, isn't that wonderful? Uh, Mr. Ward.
Go ahead, Mr. Lou. Uh, uh, Mr. Richardson, I, I can rest assure you, everything that I have ever asked for, you got a copy of it. I can rest assure you that. And that was, uh, that you lampooned me about it a couple of weeks ago. You did get a copy of that. That is the only thing that I have ever asked for. But I still agree with Mr., Mr. Ward. It's good for one, it should be good for all. You ask for something, you should, you should make it covered just like any, whatever was up here.
Commissioner Ward.
I'd, I'd, I'd just like to comment, going back to when I first became a commissioner and when Brian came for his position. If I sent an email to him and asked for information or was trying to get something from the department, I always copied Brian so he would know what the department was being asked. But every reply has come back to me and every commissioner. It is not, it's not information that just flows. And I would like to compliment the, uh, the manager for making sure that on all of the information that flows, I've never seen anybody, just one person get it. Uh, you know, when I, when I see it, it's got every commissioner on it. If you hit the hide button, it'll show the other people. Some people don't know how to do that. They think they're the only ones, but most of the time those other people are hidden.
Mr. Brand.
I can honestly say that, uh, in my seven years as a board member, anything that I've ever requested from the county manager or the attorney or the finance officer, they sent it to me by email, everybody got it. Everybody.
Okay, I only have one question to the manager and that is, when will we be, we be voting on the flood map?
Understanding the last update we had was probably first quarter of next year is when, um, they would be affected. They're, they will probably be put into play for the six-month period, um, in the fall. The only thing the board has to vote on is to abop them and update our system, uh, to, to have them in play. No further update from what we've been told. Mr. Langley.
Save the best for last. Certainly, what I, what I really want to talk about is, is this facility again. First of all, I want to make this first, first comment that I, I'm thankful that all the commissioners are in agreement that we need a new facility and that they wanted to come before the people as a referendum. But, but what I say, excluding Commissioner Richardson, he's not gonna agree with anything because he was part of this stop-all-the-progress committee period. So, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we need to get to the point where we are prepared that at any given time, that if a federal judge said that you need to build a facility, we need to be able to show that we've turned in dirt in the ground to stop them from telling us exactly what we have to build. And one of the things that I'm hearing is that, that some of the commissioners are still stuck on the, the ideal and the fact that the facility needs be, needs, needs to be behind the current facility. And I said, no, no, no. I mean, because basically what you're gonna do is, is create the same problem we have right now and that is to land lock a facility. And see, some say, well, tear this down. And why are you gonna tear down to build when you already have open landscape that you can simply put a facility? And I know Commissioner Richardson is not in agreement about a new facility and he's entitled to, to feel the way that he feels. But at the same token, why are we constantly putting lipstick on this pig? It is an old and equated facility. In nineteen eighty-two, when I was a deputy sheriff, I worked in that jail. I'll be sixty-two this month and we still talking about this antiquated, old jail that was out of shape when I was in it in nineteen eighty-two working. And the thing was, back during that particular time, as a deputy on the road, if, if a, if a jailer couldn't show up for work, you had to go in and work the jail. So, trust me, I know about the Beaufort County jail. It's all about officer safety, segregation, classification, and just overall help for people, period. That, that place doesn't have, have ventilation in it. It doesn't have ambient light. And I know they've said they've done this to fix the ambient light, but everybody seems to be on one accord about we need something new. What I'm saying is, let's not waste time just saying we need something new and that we're gonna put a referendum out before the people. And I'll be perfectly honest with you about the referendum. When it comes to building facilities like that, you don't need a referendum. You simply need commissioners who will, who will stand up and say, this is what we need to do and simply do it and stop trying to pass it off on the taxpayers. Say, y'all decide whether we need it or not. That is not the way. It, it takes commissioners to stand up and say, this is what we need and this is exactly what we're going to do. And so, what I'm asking on this evening is, is for commissioners to really consider the location that this facility needs to go to. And we can, we can talk about other things later, but what I'm, what I'm challenging with right now is, where do we need to put this? We don't need to put it behind the courthouse. We have two industrial parks. And I'm saying either, oh, it makes no difference to me one way or another. The most important thing for me is, is that we choose the location and let's begin to move toward making this facility happen. It is timeout for making excuses. We need to do what needs to be done. Do what's best for the inmates in that facility as well as the officers who are, who are forced to work in the environment that they're working in. Seven hundred, seventy-two thousand dollars, that's what we're getting ready to spend on that pig? Oh, this is terrible. We need to make some decisions and we need to make them rapidly. Thank you.
Commissioner Brand.
Um, agree with some of the things you said. I think that, uh, referendum is the way to go. Because the people of Beaufort County have to know what it's gonna cost them. If you add, say, uh, Satan winds up costing thirty million dollars, what's the debt service on thirty million dollars? Okay, well, you know, I figured it would be seven, ten cent to pay for the jail. Beaufort County cannot afford that right now. But if it goes on referendum and the citizens of Beaufort County vote to build a new complex and they got to know exactly what it's gonna cost them. That's what I got. And I'll, and I want them to know what it's gonna cost before they ever go to the ballot box. But I don't think it'll ever pass.
Mr. Devlin. I heard Mr. Brand, I was listening to you speak as well. And if my eyes aren't deceiving me, the information on the, uh, agenda is that my chairman, my attorney would like to hold a discussion about placing a referendum on the ballot in November twenty twenty. Yes, we spoke and said, let's go ahead and do it without a referendum. I think you, uh, intimated that. Um, we did that last time without a referendum. And, uh, the, uh, government commission said we couldn't do it like that. I think it came down to that. I think it came down to that we were completely, uh, out of step with what good governance would be in Beaufort County for this amount of money. And it, it did not pass, so we probably already have that jail right now. Uh, so, I, I'd like to know that this is not gonna morph into, uh, something other than a referendum on the ballot. I'm not saying whether I'm gonna agree to vote for the people to have a, a vote in it or not at this point. But if it, if it gets to a point where we're asking the people to not consider the money piece of this and just do it, which is the right thing to do, then we've got a problem here as people who manage the treasury here. I, I'd like to know that you're gonna stick to the referendum piece of this.
Commissioner Langley.
Okay, uh, one correction. Uh, basically, the board approved building of the facility. But, uh, the loan did not go through because the same stop the progress committee got Senator Bill Cook to call the local government, go over and talk to those folks. And what they said was, wait, we will wait until after we see what happens in the election. And then when the election happened and the board changed, the first thing that new board did was to kill this facility and throw away, what was it, one point three million? One point five million dollars. That's how we got to where we are right now. And as far as, uh, change in the way that we do it, I'm one commissioner. I wish I did have that kind of power that I could say that it's gonna be so and then, uh, all you guys just say, yes, sir, yes, sir. But we all know it don't work that way. So, that, that, that is not my intention. My intentions are strictly, let's move forward. I'm telling you, when an inmate get this thing right over in this, in this detention facility, all the wording is right. And a federal judge looks at it and he says, you are going to build this facility and you're gonna spend X number of dollars. The citizens of Beaufort County are not gonna have any choice but to spend X number of dollars. This is what I'm trying to avoid. Let's not have someone dictate to us exactly what we're going to build when we already have plans for a facility that will adequately, adequately take care of Beaufort County for years to come. That's what I'm trying to do. I can't, I can't change the way you do anything. I'm one person. Only thing I can do is put information out here in front of you and hope that you will make a wise and prudent decision.
Commissioner Brand.
I was at that meeting with the USDA in Raleigh and, uh, what they told me, and I think they told you and, uh, and Commissioner, uh, Richardson, was that they could not approve the loan because there was so much, um, problem with the people of Beaufort County didn't want the jail. They couldn't approve, uh, giving us the loan because there was so much controversy about a lot of money. And that's the reason they didn't, they didn't approve the loan.
I beg to differ. That, that is, that is, 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 is not the truth and I, and I don't, I do not remember Commissioner Richardson being with, with me at any meeting at the, uh, local government commission. Have you ever been to a meeting at a local government commission with Commissioner Richardson?
Four of us could not be in the room at the same time. And I remember doing that. So, and who was at that meeting? Gary was there, I know, but I don't remember who else was there.
It was Commissioner Langley, myself, Commissioner Richardson and Alvin. That's who was, that's who was at the meeting.
May I have a go? These guys have been twice. Oh, Gary. Look, what I'm gonna say is, all of you guys are partially right. All of you are just about right. So, I'm, I'm not taking exception to what you're saying. But I am gonna make a radical statement that's, that's astounding. Why don't we just not have any prisoners in the jail and that solves the jail prisoner problem? And where I'm going with this is, the bad management of the jail. That lands on the commissioners, that lands on the sheriff and that lands on the legal community. That lands on everybody. We had eighteen prisoners for the last four years in the jail that have been there for six months to more than two years without having a trial date set. six months to more than two years without having a trial date set. A trial date set, that's unconstitutional. Now, last month, because I go over this, and I send the DA an email about every other month, last month, when the last report that we got, there was, he had worked it down to twelve people had been there six months to two years. That's a major change. I got an email from him today, because I sent him an email, said, thank you very much for what you've done, blah, blah, blah. But, and he's, he came back, and he said, look, here's the status of some of these cases, and he gave me the status. The number is gonna keep going down, and the reason is because the DA is working on it, and because I give him the inventory, he doesn't have to listen to everybody else. And he goes to work on those cases. So if you get, if you start trying people in a timely manner, unloads the jail, if you have a method, and some jails have this, a method of screening prisoners for the purpose of getting those out of jail that need to be out, like the guy that gets arrested on Saturday night drunk, and if he's not at work on Monday morning, he loses his job, and he doesn't have a, a bad record, he can be let go. Mental health cases can be handled differently, but you can't just say we're gonna do this because there's nobody in charge who's gonna do it. If it was gonna be done, it would already be being done. We need to come up with a plan to vet these prisoners so that we don't have so many prisoners in jail. And what's coming at you on the size of the jail is, the federal government under Donald J. Trump is working on how to reduce the criminal level of people that we have in jails in the United States, because we have a lot more people incarcerated than a lot of other countries do. There's other ways to do this. And in Missouri, they said, you can't keep a guy in jail just because he can't make bail. That's not a legitimate excuse for keeping him, you have to have some other reasons. So, there's a lot going on on this, and it is a unloading that jail, in which case you don't need a jail, and we can do away with that million dollar health program we got down there that's not even required, is to find a way to make this work. A lot of jails have, if they're a large enough jail, they have a staff that does what I just talked about. If it's a small jail, there's one person who does it, maybe part-time. There is a lot of things that can be done to improve our jail, and, and there's a lot of things, like the lady was talking about, the video conferencing. I don't know why we don't have that, because it's been talked about for years and years and years and years, and a jail's been given approval over and over and over again, but it hasn't been done yet. So, we're back to what we've been talking about here tonight, who's in charge? Answer, nobody's in charge because we're all running from it.